Okay, I'd like to call this meeting order Thursday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. It's five oh six. And first hand agenda was approved the re- review approved the minutes from March seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March seventh.
I will second it.
All in favor? Um, your next.
Financial statements?
Yeah, please.
Okay, um. I don't think I presented warrants at the last meeting, so I wanted to get that on here today, even though this was just a special budget meeting. So twenty-three warrants were signed electronically totaling fifty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. That was for anything signed, um, which I think was from January through this meeting. Uh, I gave you the year-to-date expense reports. There's no new concerns. There are some overages. But if you look at the bottom line of the budget, we still have about five percent to spend, which is a little over a hundred thousand. Um, and we'll spend that down in various ways. Not everything is encumbered yet, so a lot of that's already accounted for. It's just not in the report yet. Um, and I think that's it.
But mostly all the salaries are encumbered.
Oh, the salaries.
The only thing we're worried about is like electricity and.
Yeah, like some of the utilities aren't fully encumbered yet, you know, office supplies, that kind of thing. Um, PD right now, teachers are putting in for second round of PD if they're eligible for that. So, you know, the substitute lines, those kind of things, but anything salaries-wise is fully encumbered. I think that there's still some money in the technology lines to be spent. That's a good chunk. That's probably like twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of a hundred that's left, so.
And we usually wait to this time to assess what our techniques will be.
Yep, exactly.
Like for new Chromebooks or something like that, okay. Any questions about?
Nope.
Uh, public comment tonight?
No, just here's the part we'll all be informed.
I really do appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness and hard work.
Thank you.
And I'm just interested.
You're all our public.
Hey, you are the public.
We like it when public comes. Um, guess we're gonna go right into FY twenty-five budget. Talking, voting, all in your bubble.
Alright, so this is a. Oh, you're doing it?
Oh, you're doing it.
I was doing it.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we've been doing. If you would like to, you can.
I don't know why I'm so off, but I am just off, right? So, yes.
Okay.
But it is behind me, right?
Yes. Alright, so another presentation of budget, bringing it back. Uh, I wanted to give you a recap of where we were at the public hearing, so this is what we talked about at the March seventh meeting. Uh, we were looking at a budget of five point five seven percent increase over FY twenty-four. You can see level services, which is wages and non-wages. That was a big driver with the transportation increase there compared to prior months. And then the new request did include, uh, the one new IA for the one-to-one that we know we're going to have new next year per an IEP. And then the point five, uh, full-time equivalent math interventionist position, and then a couple of other increases. We also were using forty thousand dollars of ESSR and forty-two thousand dollars of rural aid to bring that number down. So if you take that into perspective, uh, eighty thousand dollars is what, about four percent? So we were at nearly ten percent without those supplemental funds. And the reason I wanna bring that up is because we're already looking ahead to next year. So that means we're gonna start next year with a potential deficit of eighty-two thousand dollars as we build the budget. And that's important as we go through the consideration process, particularly with this math interventionist position, which was the big topic of discussion at the last meeting. Um, so where we are today, I've pulled the math interventionist out, so you could see what that number looks like. If we did not have that position in here, we're still gonna continue to talk about that request and need at the school. But I wanted you to see what the budget would look like without that. Uh, so we would be at three point seven nine, which again, that is using eighty-two thousand in supplemental funds. So really another four percent on top of that, so our true budget is about eight percent increase. Um, and it, the new request comes down significantly because that point-five position is about thirty-five thousand dollars.
In both of these drafts that you put up here, the increase in transportation in their summer?
Yeah, it's in the fifty-one thousand dollar number under level services.
Got it, got it.
So continuing the conversation, so like I said, the math interventionist is the big point of conversation. There was a lot of talk at the last meeting, not only about whether or not we can afford it, but whether or not, um, it is a need of the school. And I, you know, will defer to Christie to give her, um, opinion on that again. Um, my understanding is that, you know, we're holding firm that there is a need for this. Um, but just wanted to give you some recap details here, so it is a halftime position. Salary is just shy of thirty-five thousand based on what we have budgeted. Um, it would provide greater support for students and teachers. There's still the question of is it long-term or short-term need? We talked about it being a one-year position to try to support, um, outrolling the new curriculum. So support for teachers and then direct support for students as well. And then, of course, our challenge is funding, so we do have additional ESSR funds available that are not, um, earmarked yet. However, they are one-time funds, and to date, we have avoided using one-time funds to support budget. Um, we've used ESSR for a lot of other important things. Keep in mind, we're already using forty thousand, so if we use another thirty-five thousand of ESSR, we're gonna be seventy thousand in a deficit plus the rural aid, because we don't know what the rural aid they get, so.
But never less, right? The rural aid never less?
I know, we don't know that.
Have you heard out of Beacon Hill yet?
Making the, the house, the house budget, the house and sort of stuff came out and it was at half of that. It was seven million, five hundred.
Governor level funded in her recommendation and the house cut it in half. So we could be looking at.
I think, I don't know, I'm trying to play the politics, but I think they're playing games with it and it's gonna be just level funded. So, you know, I mean, if it's at the, at the best, it's gonna be level funded.
When is, when is that voted on? Do we know? Do you know when the, or is it just sort of up?
It's in June.
So.
The.
Awesome.
But the, uh, the other issue on that is that, um, they're pushing for the per child, per people reimbursement to be at a hundred and three dollars or something like that. Instead of whatever, but we've been so much more with, with rural aid. So, you know, so instead of getting, so we, we think our number here is gonna be. You gotta generally.
For what? Rural aid?
Yeah, no, the price per pupil.
Oh, um, it was in the governor's budget at thirty, the house put it in at the one oh three, which only gives the town of Whately like an extra four thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. It's minimal amount.
It's not even, it's, it's like, if you, you're like, so they're politically right now, the trade, they're more in a system price, you know, fellow per pupil, rather than the rural aid, which we get absolutely sunk with.
But the reason they're doing that is because there are more states, I mean, more districts statewide in a whole harmless than there are rural schools receiving rural aid money, so.
Absolutely, more people will win with that and.
Right.
More people, it's more.
Right, yeah. So, um, the other two options, uh, with funding are to put it on the general fund, which puts us back to the five point five seven percent, which is fine if we feel like the town will support that. Um, and then I don't wanna forget, which I've already touched on a little bit, the twenty-six impact and beyond. You know, it's, it's a really significant deficit, even just the ESSR funds. Say we get the forty-two thousand and rural aid again, seventy thousand dollars to make up in one budget year is a lot of money. So do we go into it as a one-year position? Can we even pose it that way in the posting and find somebody to fill that role? Um. Or if that is a need, other cuts would have to be considered to keep that moving forward, because we don't have the surplus revolving funds, which I touched on.
And they have, they have, um, you're talking about one-year position with no benefits?
No, it would be a benefit-eligible position.
Okay, I thought we were talking about.
Even though it's part-time?
Yeah, because part-time, to be eligible for benefits, you have to work twenty hours or more a week, so save the option.
Okay.
We really just need someone nineteen hours.
Some of that's still a mom and dad's insurance. Until what, twenty-six now or whatever it is?
Twenty-five-year-old.
No losses there, don't worry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
If we do bring in this person, um, what in your mind does that look like? You know, for how many grades is this person servicing, like, how many stu- do you have like an idea of how many students need to be serviced by this person?
Right now, and some of it is, do we look at MCAS scores, you know, just don't take MCAS, but there is a, there's a remarkable difference pre-COVID and post-COVID in what our upper grade students are able to do, and it kind of makes sense. Um, we focus our reading specialist in the lower grades for obvious reasons, and I think we would definitely focus the math interventionist on the upper grade.
So you're looking at like four, five, six?
Yes.
And getting them up to a grade level?
And filling those, those gaps.
And then, for some reason, that didn't pass, or we don't find that person, what's the plan to fill in those gaps without an extra person?
We keep doing the best that we can, um, to differentiate instruction and like if, when it comes to math, it's about filling holes, things that got missed somewhere along, along the line, um. Now we have instructional systems who pitch in and work with small groups, but ideally would be someone to collaborate with the classroom teacher. With flexible grouping, so looking at who needs what now, so this is the concept the class is working on. What are the requisite skills and who needs those? And then, so it wouldn't be like, these are the three kids who get math intervention on the floor.
Right, right.
Who needs what to participate for any, what's, what's going on in the classroom? Um, that being said, we're also getting new math curriculum.
Right, right.
Uh, so that's a, that's a piece and there.
What do you think about the new math curriculum that's coming out? I mean, you know, and he must know something about it.
It's awesome.
Oh.
Am I too late? It's so.
You have, go ahead.
We have a couple of teachers in the building who have used it, started using it this year, and Mrs. Tippett is one of those. And rarely do we take on a new curriculum that so many people agree is really fantastic, and bridges seems to be one that sort of overall people really think is, is effective and, uh, not easy to use, but manageable to implement. Um, some of the, the programs that are available are so cumbersome, and this one seems to be a little more user-friendly both on the teacher's side and the student's side, so.
Kids are really engaged.
Very, feeling very excited about that. Our, one of our issues has been that there was a lot of choice in what each grade level could use. It's just, you know, there's some value in, in saying to a teacher, here are three math events that we have vetted and one of the few are effective. Think about the kids in front of you and use what you think is best, but then everyone's kind of doing their own thing. And math, each program has its own sort of language and its structure. And if every grade is using it, then the kids get to know what the language and the structure is, and it's not new learning every year in terms of how the program works. So I'm, I'm looking forward to a time when everyone's using the same program. Um, and I do have to say, this came to me from someone who's been here longer than I have been, that prior to my being here, a math interventionist was approved halftime. We're thinking maybe two thousand sixteen.
Well, that person always used to be in the school.
This was different. I think you're talking about Mrs. H.
Yeah.
Um. We were, right, we were starting to split a math interventionist with CGS. And I, I, no one really kind of knows what happened. But the other thing to keep in mind is most schools, and most schools are not as small, but most schools have reading specialist and a math specialist on staff.
Yeah.
Um, and so there's a piece of me that feels like I don't want kids to miss out on opportunities for support because they came to our school for this program, so.
Darius, is there anyone at one of the other elementary schools that could come here part-time and also?
They'd be reducing their.
Hours there.
So they're all full-time at the other three schools?
Oh, they are.
Or we share with another district, you know, somebody doesn't just work at one, they work elsewhere, so. So I think generally we feel like we support the need collectively as a group. I haven't heard anyone say that we don't support the need, um, and the desire. So then it comes down to, how do we fund it? Um, we talked a little bit about future budget concerns. Um, a couple other things to point out is that Unit A and Unit C will have contract negotiations next year, so we'll be looking at increases in wages. Um, we talk about this every budget cycle and we're experiencing it right now. It is hard to fill new needs, um, with such a small budget, because your percentage points are, are, they're minor, you know, one percent is twenty-two thousand dollars, so. Nah, that's, that's tough to swallow. Um, and then revolving funds, our projections right now, we talked about this early on in the budget cycle, but school choice balance, I'm projecting to be slightly under a hundred thousand at the end of next year. That's, um, less than one year in reserve, and if we did have some type of emergency, whether it's building-wide or, um, facilities-wise or out-of-district placement, that would get eaten through really quickly. Um, and then early childhood, uh, we didn't talk a ton about this year because the program seems to be healthy as far as enrollment goes, but we have had increased needs in the, uh, special ed popu- population and early childhood, which decreases our tuition because we're providing services at no cost, um, so. You know, it's just thing to be mindful of that we don't have other pockets of money to dip into as we're making budget decisions.
The one-on-one, I mean, I know it's only a small pocket, the one-on-one aid for next year, are we looking at five years in the future for that? Or can you say how many years, is it multiple years coming up for that person, one-on-one?
It's been a while.
So it'll be, it'll be on our budget for a while, okay?
And so that's the other kind of, one thing to consider is that we're looking at increasing staffing by a position. I mean, it's, I, they're not the full president teacher, but it's basically, which is very difficult to do in school, right? Adding a position is huge. It's three percentage minimum. Um, and so that's, you know, so that's kind of where we're. And so I just want to make sure people understand that if, if we save ESSR money, what basically we're doing is we're swapping out costs with school choice and increasing school choice, so that we have school choice funds for next year. Just want to make sure everybody has that kind of, that's how we're moving money around, like, because the ESSR money has to be spent by September. So if you leave your, you have to spend it by September, like, well, how are they, how are they doing that? Basically, we're just trading expense lines, um, and then try to have more of a savings to go into next year. And next year, I mean, I think we, elementary, if, if we can project what collective bargaining is going to be, what's gonna be a reasonable kind of, you know, you know, what's gonna be this year or more, right? And this year's probably, you know, maybe a two percent, you know, given the current market, it's gonna be that or more. Um, it's gonna be a tough year next year. We are gonna have to go to the town, most likely, unless there's an outside influx of funds that is not on the radar now. We will be at probably, without reductions of staffing, at six.
At least, yeah.
At least, so next year's gonna be a tough year no matter what, and so the conversation, um, one, we wanted to make sure we have that conversation early on with the town, so they know that, like, we see it coming. It's not like a mismanagement, it's just the cost, you can't, you have to have adjustments, um, on school size. And we really had one, you know, about six years ago, my first year. Um, but that's just kind of the reality, so.
So.
So, so if we, so if we do the five point five seven, we'll be saving on ESSR to use it on something else that we may, we may need down the road, but we have to spend it by September?
Well, we would basically be saving it, so like Darius said, we would move expenses around.
Okay.
We'd get that into school choice, and we'd have that additional thirty thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars to help offset next year's budget. So it's a little bit like six and one half dozen and another. Do we reduce the budget now and use the ESSR? And have a lower increase request to the town? And then, um, next year, the increase is larger? Or do we go at the five point five seven, save some money and help bring the increase down next year? I still think regardless, I don't imagine we're gonna be under four percent next year, even with supplemental funds. We're looking at a few hard budget cycles.
Is everybody in the same boat as us? Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
Just, yeah, I, my thought is that, you know, if we go to the town this year with three point seven, and then we go next year with seven, you know, you're saying it could be seven, I think that's a huge increase. There's gonna be a lot of questions, a lot of, um, you know, unhappy people. So my thought is we go in with the five point five. You know, we've already just had the math interventionist discussion with some of them, and see what they say. And if they approve it, great, and then next year's jump doesn't look so huge, you know? Um, and maybe that person we only need for one year, who knows? But then, if we go in without the math interventionist, then we're looking at paying for it ourselves, because we all agree that we need it, right?
Yeah.
We, so I think we should save that ESSR money, ask the town for the increase, and see what they say.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree, and I also just, maybe it's, it's an emotional position, but I've never liked the feeling of betting against students this year in the name of helping them next year. I feel like they're in the school this year, they deserve everything that we can give them this year.
Right.
And that way, we're not prioritizing a class down the road. It's, they need it now.
Right, and those fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, like you're saying, they need that math help now. We don't wanna leave it to frontier when they get there, you know, and they're already behind starting in a new school, so. Um, I think it's an important person to have here, at least for the year, and see what they say.
So what happens if this person works out really well? And we wanna keep her, keep that person for another year or two or three or four? Are we gonna be able to afford roughly thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars next year? Or are we gonna use some other monies?
Well, so, um, right, so.
I'm trying to look at.
Right, and so, fair question, and I think the, you'd have, so there's one, either you have to increase revenue somehow, which either taxes to be from the tax base or, you know, from the town, so to speak. Um, any other outside monies, if we get an increase in rural aid, that might be able to help offset that? Um, or you have to reduce other staffing to prioritize this stuff.
Not to get off that subject, you know, looking at money, what, what does school choice look like for next year for, for numbers? Are, are we, are we getting the replacement of our sixth graders?
We're, we're losing seven sixth graders, and we have thirteen new school choice students who are starting.
That's great.
Yeah, that's, see, there's.
Possibly one more. We're still waiting to hear from one more.
So that's money that, if we had to use it for the math person again, possibly as a, until, until we find out, do we need this person all the time? This person's the best person possible, and it's helping our school? Then we're gonna have to figure out getting it on the budget permanently in the future. But if it's a one-year thing and it's worked out well and bridges takes over and, and we don't need the person, but if we need it, then we're gonna have to figure out a way next year to put it on our budget.
I think, you know, you know, we said it, asked it Bill Smith, and we have to do it down here, um, in the sense of like, you gotta say what the needs are. If the, the community doesn't wanna, you know, he always says, put up the flagpole and salute it. If this community doesn't wanna salute it, they can reject the budget.
Right.
That's your call. And remember, you, you want to be in agreement with finance community. You don't have to be in agreement with finance. I don't know, they didn't officially, I don't know, they didn't give me official word if they voted up or down that early proposed number, but you can be in disagreement. You just have to be, if you do, just be, you have to be prepared to talk about it and how many for.
Exactly.
But we will be there as well.
A table that tells the next meeting.
Well, and she also asked, you know, the, uh, um, Lynn asked to press the some of the numbers over after this meeting. So they know we're making a decision. And to be fair, because we play this game in other ones as well, like, it's your decision to make. You, you really don't wanna divert it to them. You just kind of wanna give, let them to kind of shout at us and say, give us their ideas. But it's your call on like, hey, we're coming in above five this year. This is why we think, reason why, we have no problem explaining that to the general public. That, if you're comfortable with that statement, then go with, go with the higher number, and, you know what I mean? You get in front of the town, this is why we think we need it. And people will say, eh, or, and the other part is what we don't know is how much money the town has. So, right, so their assessment for frontier went up, which means they have more money. Okay, and so, but I don't know exactly what that looks like. I don't, you know, I don't see what their chapter ninety funds or other funds, and I don't know the other projects and how that works in. But usually, when frontier, when also you have, they have an eleven percent on frontier for their assessment this year, right?
It was ten-ish.
Yes. And which means, why does your assessment go up? Because your income has gone up. That's how it's, in, in some way or another, your assessment of your town, so.
Yeah, a couple millionaires come into town.
They, it can't, you don't know exactly. It's dangerous for me to say it like that, but it does, but just to show that we, they might be saying, hey, we can afford five percent this year. And next year, the kids may have, they may have building or new whatever they could have, I don't know. We don't know those things. That's where the communication happens with the town, but I do, the reason why they do, and again, this is, again, I'm probably helping sell this to you, but the reason why they do keep schools separate from whatever is this exact thing. If you have people pushing, pencil pushing finance all the time, we're dealing with education, then you're not making education decisions, you're making finance decisions. And that's why they create school committee to act as it is.
Hmm.
And so just kind of reminding folks, that's why it is a separate body, that way it is, you know, um, just what happens, our school committee controls.
Going into the five point five.
Absolutely.
Same.
I think we can justify why that number is what it is.
Um, so I'm bringing this back up for you, uh, because we will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, and this is the amount and the percentage.
So motion to, to submit.
To approve the general fund budget at.
To five point five seven percent? Our motion to approve the general fund budget at five point five seven percent.
Over FY twenty-four.
Or FY twenty-four.
And you can type the number in there in the minutes to Christie in that motion, the two million, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred, fourteen dollars.
You want the percentage in the number, you know, if either one.
I love, sorry, sorry, retry that one time.
No, you're, I think we're good.
I just really like watching Christie type really quickly.
I'll look at the minutes, too, and make sure that the motion's in there, right?
You, you make me look good. That'd be great, thank you.
Um, I second the motion.
All in favor? So moved.
So I will send this over to the town tomorrow, so they know, great, what we're judged for.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate all the dialogue around everything. It's a good conversation.
It's a big ask, the big beat, but if it's already big, next year, it's not like having to relive this.
Two percent more, doesn't seem as big as.
Right. And, and, yeah.
Compared to where, where, as you were just talking about, but compared, um, I can get the list of, who's going around the list, so to speak, or what all the increases are across the state, it's not crazy. Five, been the fighters, not crazy, but the fact that overall our districts have been lower than that pretty consistently, um, you know, kind of shows like, you know, they're, they're, just like, our neighboring towns are all.
I believe, you guys talk all the time, obviously, our tenants talk all the time, so.
I'll be, but make sure, correct, make sure we get out the best.
Oh, enough are, and the ones that aren't that high, they're making dramatic cuts to get low.
I think East Long Meadow also had to cut a bunch. Um, they got brought out with that school community.
Thank you.
And part of the challenge is, is that these larger districts that got, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or a million dollars on ESSR money, they added positions, and now they can no longer afford it, that ESSR is not available. So that's part of the reason why they're having to make cuts. So we were really fortunate not to have to do that, and up until this point, and use ESSR on other things, so.
You know, we're still debating about adding on as opposed to having to reduce, which is a privilege.
I really, I really think the state, the federal government, I know a lot of people that have COVID that are still sick and can't hold a job.
Yeah, long COVID is real, yeah.
I mean, that's why the state, the federal government should be still helping towns, like, like any, any town that has, has problems, because it's, you have to bring in special people to help, help the kids. And I, I know, you know, I know the state knows that somewhat. Are they willing to give up money or get more money from the federal government, you know?
This is the, uh, this is where it was.
Wow, running line.
About a month ago.
All right, bounce the ball on the rough spot.
I'm trying to kind of scroll along, uh, but you can kind of get.
Yeah, look at that.
Here's our elementary school, one point four four.
You can end up there.
Yes.
They swing that.
Did the town, town, town have a lot of money?
So Deerfield made some decisions last year with their budget that set them up this year. They reduced two teachings. Decisions last year.
What's the word on the street?
They had two sections per grade level, so they could consolidate. They used that grade.
Right, now they're going under two.
What's, what are the class sizes?
They're still, they're still like eighteen.
So each grade only has two there now?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
We didn't, which it started, you know, a few years back when they made a decision to, school choice was being inflated the faculty and so they had a full class of school choice. They started reducing that. I mean, it's gonna have a ripple effect to Frontier.
If they, the proposed tax cuts for, uh, or the cuts for North Hampton go through, the average class size is looking to be about thirty-five to thirty-seven kids.
Wow, where?
For freshmen, no. If they cut, if the mayor's proposal goes through.
What's Pelham?
Where are you on a superintendent?
What's that? We have a superintendent, a principal's meeting.
Marhart, almost five percent.
Really?
Yeah.
By students this year. I mean, how many times?
Three point two seven on Sunderland.
They cut.
That makes sense. One teacher, one grade here. We, we can't, the only thing we could cut if we had to cut something with these.
So these are all, these don't, don't, these aren't like, uh, these were in motion, in, in the works. So a lot of them, I'm sure came down somewhat.
Well, so the first one, when I filled that I, and I think was before the transportation.
Look at West Springfield.
Right, like. So North Hampton, what they're trying to do, what they're saying is they can collapse some of the elementary schools together as a way to save on costs.
I know, but I appreciate that because it makes our ass look very reasonable.
And I mean, that's, we talk about having to like pitch it to the town.
Yeah.
We're nowhere near the town.
Right.
No, I was like, oh, we actually were done.
Are we still on?
Are we all, are we all done with this now? So we can go on to composting?
Yeah. Do you have that information?
I thought that they were gonna be there.
Oh, did you ask for two of them?
Uh, yes. I can say that the last, and maybe you had a different one, keeping you on you as well, but the last numbers I have uh, is one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for the year to compost.
And that's for the transport?
Yeah. Is that, is that what you?
I can't find it, but that sounds right.
But they, did they, did they put the bins here? Did they put the bins here and everything? Or?
Let's see.
Five bins? How much does a bin hold?
Cause it's all that stuff that's just going into the regular garbage, correct?
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't bring anything up in advance. Um, it's for hauling is what she's saying, but you, do we have a bin that we were using the past year for composting?
No. Nothing I'm aware of.
And use of the dumpster. It's called one twenty-five, flat feet for hauling and the use of a dumpster.
Alright, so they give us a dumpster and we just.
So they just come.
It smells great wherever that is.
We'll be attracting wildlife.
Yeah, the bears will be going right into it and stuff.
You said that was a projected cost of one thousand four hundred.
That's what I have. Uh, the lowest possible price, one thousand four hundred and thirty, the highest one thousand nine hundred and eighty.
What do you think?
If you wanna say two thousand is a, okay, yeah, right.
If you wanna, you don't wanna be anybody, that's good.
But that was for, that's for the school year. Okay, yeah, alright.
What do you think, Kevin? Oh, you know, Chris.
I mean, it's something we should be doing, but.
Okay, and the other schools.
Have to think about, like, in the context of the larger conversation, or don't have a whole lot of surplus cash digging around, so.
So I'm gonna throw something at it and everybody, everybody goes to the transfer station. There's a big compost thing there.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think I asked about it again, is there any way that Dan, if there's barrel a day or barrel every other day or every three days, that's not too heavy, can Dan? If you give him gas money, bring it over to that compost and bin at the transfer station, which is just a mile down the road?
I don't think I can volunteer his vehicle.
I think, I think you're, I mean, I think for what you're asking, like, yeah, it makes sense, but when you're running a a facility like this, Dan's out sick this week and also get double compost, you know what I mean? And then it's also compost, it's a little different than with, I don't know what this transfer station's like, but I mean, milk cartons are compost. So it's like, it's a, it's not, it's not your.
Not food.
It's not, it's not your leaves and branches and that kinda stuff. It is, like, this stuff has to be kind of, I'm putting a facility, it's taking that kinda compost. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's all paper product and anything is, anything is.
The scale is probably bigger than a, a truck.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I imagine you guys produce a lot of food waste, not intentionally.
The majority of your cap to your waist will be.
Get it in the kitchen, beating the box. Do the other schools have this? That's my impression, and they budget for it. They.
They just got it in, they got it in a year. They weren't having this discussion we had five minutes ago. You know, they did it the other year, we'd be like, yeah, it was too close to. So.
So run your budget for trash over, and then next year we talk about adding it into the budget.
We're already asking for a thirty percent increase next year, right? And then we just said, so, what's another, what's another two K in the?
Yeah, I mean, one twenty-five to one fifty a month.
I recycle, I don't compost. I don't have a compost bin on my own property. I recycle. I love recycling.
What do you do with your coffee grounds?
I should be putting in my garden.
Eat some.
I know. I should be, I'm saving all my eggshells though. I am so.
I compost, I compost like crazy.
I do too.
I'm just gonna hold down Westbrook here.
What are you doing with all your compost? Put it in the garden?
Take ours and compost.
If you buy me the trailer for my Prius, I would love to have it, you know, pull it.
They throw everything out there.
Sometimes chickens get into it, you know.
I, I'm in favor of doing this. I think it's a good lesson for kids to learn. I think it's a good, uh, habit to get into, as we can see as adults, not all of them.
Think that.
So let's, let's, let's keep out the lies of omission, yeah.
Because when they used to, like, there was a lot of training that women could teaching them, having some of their pictures next to, where they, we have a very fancy, like.
Did you have to triple the tri-park?
Yeah. And so we used to do that, but we, we didn't at some point say, just throw it all in the same thing after I was, and continued using that. So we don't, we don't lie to them and say, well, composting, we never told them that we're not.
Well, yeah, it's kinda like what you know, the, it's our trash service at Frontier's that way now too, where they mix both. They mix the recycling together, where you used to keep.
All the.
Fireboard and.
What do you call it? It's called something. Single stream, ready.
Yeah, we do that in the restaurant too, it's all together.
It's all together now. And we, and people, they give me a separate a year, the truck comes, they just throw it all in the same thing and you're like, I spent like an hour separating. But then they separate because it's cheaper to have a few trucks.
Yeah.
Better for the environment, but it's.
So, so we gotta put a, we'll put a cap, we'll put, I mean, it's really weird that they're talking from thirteen hundred to nineteen hundred.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean.
So I wouldn't worry about the number. I would just say we move to, I would make the motion.
Should we put a cap on it?
We will be a composting school and we, the administration figures out how to do it. And obviously, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna try to get that price up. Don't put a cap on it. Come back to it and say, listen, it's two thousand, two dollars this year, like, it's just.
Alright, so motion to include composting and have administration deal, deal with it. Motion to, to, what, to include, uh, composting in, as part of our waste management budget for next year.
They'll stay down on a, save on a regular trash, but.
The problem is it, it does reduce your amount of trash you make, but your, your trash.
They're still coming, yeah.
I didn't know if they could come every other week. Chrissy, can you stay on top of that for us?
Yeah.
We should have a giant scale and have children come and stand on one side, and that's how we're.
Oh, jeez. All in favor?
I knew we were gonna go to eat the compost.
When I was at, um, Sunnyside daycare, we have a big poison ivy infestation there. And so we were trying to find ghosts to come in and, I mean, there was, there was a group called the Goat.
Yeah, they, they still are. As a death, she comes and puts up a temporary electric fence.
Never pulled it, you know, every time it happened, but it was really fantastic.
And they go in there and he's.
Everything, everything in the understanding.
Everything. It's better than using Roundup and all that other crap.
Well, goats eat not weed.
Goats, I think, eat anything.
One thing is using goats on the side of the road now, I mean, now.
Now, I mean, and bittersweet.
We're, we're over, we're over in, I see in Massachusetts, as a, an outdoors person, there's so many adhesive species out there for vines. I go in the woods, some of the vines are like that big and what they do is they go in the trees and you know what they do? They strangle the tree to death.
The biggest.
And I, I cut a lot of stuff that grow up my trees. I just cut it so the tree's still left.
I retire and I buy a herd of goats and I sell my goat services to towns to clean them, not weed alongside.
Wow.
I, I just, boy, she just said unlock. You can't steal that, that's trademarked.
I see that we got something from, we have nothing but new business. Can we, can we bring up anything that we talked about? With the denser or the, uh, the.
You can, you can, that one you can build.
Okay. So. Did you hear?
I, I would love to have it talked about.
So, yeah, at the finance committee, they discussed our duct system and that it is due for cleaning. I don't know anything about it, but has it been cleaned?
Supposedly it's never, supposedly it's never been cleaned.
Has why, why, who knows that? Who's tracking duct particle density?
Well, we. Right.
So this came about when, um, some folks from the town.
Finance committee.
And they toured with Bill Hildreth and, um, and so that's where it came out. I, okay. I did not know it was something I.
And there's someone on the committee that is a builder and understands mechanical systems and buildings and houses.
Did you say as part of the tour, they were just like crawling in through the vents?
Well, I don't know. Probably asked how long it's been since they've changed anything.
Right.
It's on our, it's on our, it was on our capital plan. It was not a one or two, it was really down. To us, it was a priority to get the temperatures building lower for.
What is the cost of cleaning?
Lot of ducks. I gotta say that. I gotta say that.
Wrote that last night. That was good.
But, you know, health.
That's a math.
Just health in general, you know, it's.
If you have any kids with asthma issues.
Oh, of course, of course. I, 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 I don't wanna make light of it for all those reasons, but.
If we, if the town, whatever, I would like to see how bad it was. I mean, if, if there was a way to find out when they start doing it.
They share those commercials with people who are trying to sell out of service, show you what it can look like.
They have the camera that goes in. They must have own cameras. I guess what I heard from somebody that there's like one person in the area that does it only.
With goats.
With ducks.
We do have a quote already. I don't know if it's one person in the area.
But what's the, the quote is at thirty-four thousand.
Yeah.
That would maybe be the.
So it's thirty-four thousand. We originally broke our mini split project into two parts.
Plus the electrical upgrades, it was almost three parts.
And they approved it as one, if I remember that correctly? They wanted to do it all at once or no?
No, they didn't.
No, what did we submit, though? I don't have it.
No, as the capital improvement, they did put it through to the finance committee.
Right, okay.
But that was based on what we submitted and I can't remember the, what the, um, I'm gonna look it up right now, the number of rooms that we submitted for.
Is it, is having these ducks as they are now reducing the efficiency of the mini split system in any capacity? Like, is it, are we paying more for the mini splits because the ducks are so clogged?
The one, so, the, the way we've approached it in other buildings is, and people, there's, you've been there, there are different ways of, of skinning the whatever the cat, right? Um, I'm sorry.
The deer in the rock, whatever.
That's great. It's weird, it's gonna be, um, so we pushed forward because of the rebates with EverSource and the idea of let's get the cool air conditioning in the classrooms. That we first put the, putting the AC into the classrooms and then we're working on getting the building management system to hook up to the AC units and the other heating. Provide however the room is, many, it's univents. Right now, technically, yes, you could have the heater on in the room and the AC on at the same time. Cause, cause they're not gonna be connected. That's another hundred thousand dollars, depending on the size of the building.
Yeah, it's like a thousand dollars per unit.
And so, right now, in Deerfield, um, the green energy committee there is trying to get a grant to upgrade their VMS system to get everything wired so that you are talking to each other, so you are not running two systems at the same time. Right now, it's done manually, and I mean, basically, um, depending on the building, the control of the mini split is not always the classroom teacher's control, depending on, depending on what building. The same kinda thing is happening at Frontier, that third floor gets, you know, on a seventy-five degree day, it's eighty-five degrees in the classroom. So we put the AC units in, technically, they can be on at the same time. Took all the remotes away, cause high school kids do. You know, and, you know, they're controlled by one person and they go through, you know, daily and check that. So should they all be on the same thing? And should you do it all at once? Yeah, that makes complete sense. But we don't have enough money. We're trying to do step by step along the way and we're trying to find three ways of doing it, because green energy, you know, it's energy efficiency, not just because you can't have them on both at the same time. But, um, it's better control systems, all our control systems are out of date. We don't have the ability to, you know, open up our cell phone and check the whole building.
Right, okay.
And we, we have Frontier at a basketball game, it's eighty-five degrees in there because the control system is, is on, is on the fritz again. Um, which I haven't also called. I'll see that we get that.
So we break it down into two phases, six rooms a phase. And this year, we asked for the first phase, so sixty thousand, cause it's about ten thousand per unit or per room. And then we asked for fifty-four thousand to do the power upgrade, cause the electrical upgrade has to be done in order to do the full project. So we asked for a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Of which you get about.
There are rebates, um, no rebate on the electrical, but the town would get back.
On the.
Potentially thirty thousand dollars if we could get fifty percent on the units.
So, you know, it's fifty percent off each room, you know, and that's why we were pushing it, you know, it's, and also, you know, so EverSource uses vendors. And they're like, it is, it's gonna be around forever. And they've been saying that for the last couple of years, but eventually it's gonna stop, you know, um, but.
And then the thirty thousand dollars.
Well, it, well, exactly what we've done, we've done in other towns. So Deer, what Deerfield did is, they said, um, Deerfield, right, yeah, I wonder what kind of stuff it's looking here, but they gave us, go, you get thirty thousand, roll it right back and do three more classes. Oh, then you did those, oh, now you did three more classes. You have fifteen thousand dollars, cause you can rebate those rebates, you know what I mean? Roll that back in. And so they were very flexible with us about that money can roll back in. It gets a little, you have to work closely with the town because the money goes back to the town and that kinda stuff.
How quickly did those rebates come out?
It's, it's.
Takes a while.
It depends on the project. They have been quicker, um, when Jan Rock has done the paperwork, they've been quicker, but if we go through EverSource, it takes a lot longer.
So we, there was one we had to wait almost a year.
Yeah. But we did, the Deerfields last summer, we already received the rebate this year. That was, they went back like forty thousand dollars.
And Deerfield has a town warrant to do the, the rest of it, it said, they put seventy-two thousand dollars under one town warrant to, under their capital to do that. Conway is just about complete and Sunderland's just started.
But if they're talking about, and I didn't watch the meeting, but Bill mentioned using possibly if the town has it, ARPA money to do. But if they're talking about, and I didn't watch the meeting, but Bill mentioned using possibly if the town has it ARPA money to do the duct work project. Couldn't we still request? The other things under the capital committee and couldn't they be done? Essentially back to back? Or is this really about building management system not connecting and the duct work is just sort of a delay in the process?
There was conversations from people in the committee that, you know. Um, worried about spending more money on a energy. And, you know, coming in here in the summer and it was cold in here. And it didn't have to be that cold, you know, that kind of thing.
This room actually does.
Cause this room hasn't been.
No, it's, it's got the server.
Oh, right, right.
Well, and there's a, a humidity control component with that too. And so. Couple of years ago and they had mold in the building and everything.
Maybe that was that crazy year. We had the same, that's why Conway really pushed too, because that was the year they had a lot of mildew, they had to get full mold, but.
Yeah, you hear those carpet bugs.
Right. So we have that here. But, you know. If it's not consent, it's not toward a management system, then you have to have somebody responsible walking around, you know what I mean? And. Old schools, you know, shut the windows at night.
But the management systems cost a lot of money.
Right, costs about a thousand dollars. For Frontier, it was a thousand dollars per room. Moving, you know, in it, well, there's a lot of room. So, you know, it's, you know, it adds up, but.
The fifty four thousand for the electrical upgrade, is that only for the six mini splits that we're gonna go in or is that?
No, that would get, yeah, that would get where.